Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Here.
And Barton is absent.
Special meeting compliance statement read.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Alba, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that the notice of the date, time, and place of this special meeting was given at least forty-eight hours prior to this meeting to the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least forty-eight hours prior to this special meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view in the office of the superintendent.
Okay. The clerk will now administer the oath of office to board members. This is Karen Kane, seat number four. Do I do that? I thought he does, I guess.
Do we need to do, stand up and do the thing?
We need to stand up and do it. Act like you're trying to.
Yeah, let me face the audience.
All right.
And so I read the oath of office, and then do I also read the loyalty oath?
Mm-hmm.
You can read them both, two separate. Okay. I state your name.
I, Karen Kane.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly.
And I will not knowingly.
Receive directly or indirectly.
Receive directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or any valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a member of the Board of Education.
As a member of the Board of Education.
Of Alba Independent School District, number zero-zero-one.
Alba Independent School District, zero-zero-one.
Subscribed and sworn to me this day, this eighth day of May, 2024.
Thank you.
I've got another one.
You know, when you get that now, it seems loyal.
All right, now the loyalty oath. I state your name.
I, Karen Kane.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and the laws of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution and the laws of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
During such time.
During such time.
As I am a member of the Board of Education.
As I am a member of the Board of Education.
Of the Alba Independent School District, number zero-zero-one.
School District, number zero-zero-one.
Of Woods County, Oklahoma.
Of Woods County, Oklahoma.
Subscribed and sworn to me, before me, this eighth day of May, 2024.
Okay. Thank you. Congratulations, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For your service.
Now, I want to thank the Board of.
My pleasure.
Okay. I'm sorry, I forgot my other glasses. I'm really not as cool.
Oh, your shoe's on, you're knocking it out.
I know, girl.
Did you get a picture of the shoes?
Ready for summer. But I just, you guys are so bright.
That's what it is. That's what it is.
All right. Thank you. We will now take action to reorganize the Board of Education, President, Vice President, Clerk, and Deputy. And I think I have some things that I say. And that is nominations are now open. I'd like to make the nominations that we have. The State President is Jay McDermott, Karen Kane is Vice President, Shane Hanson is Clerk, and Kevin Pinkleton is Deputy Clerk.
Second.
Should've moved in second then. We did that pretty easily. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Does it need to be a roll call? We're gonna roll call.
Okay.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Barton. Sorry, it's not here.
He's, if he got a job, he'd been here. Okay, and that's, in the olden days, the person didn't show up.
You've got to be the chairman, that's right.
Okay. Consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one more vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of a discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. Are there any additions of items of new business to the agenda?
There are none.
Minutes of the prior two meetings, approval of the financial report, approval of the extra duty salary schedule, approval of the activity fund report, approval of the activity fund fundraisers, approval of the activity fund interaccount transfers, approval of the child nutrition report, and any items that might be declared the following as surplus.
Okay, so, Agenda Item 6.2, our minutes from the April 1st and the April 3rd of special year. Do not see any errors to those minutes. Agenda Item 6.3, our finance report. If you look at the bottom attachment, we have the investments for April. So, all those are current and up-to-date and appreciate Ms. Hughes and her working with Ms. Owen and I on making sure those are up-to-date. If you will open your top attachment, you will see the monthly finance report there, and that is current and up-to-date. If you will review the, go to the third page, you can see, or excuse me, the fourth page, we've had a revenue increase of $236,639 and an increase in our expenses to date of $986,924. If you move on down to the fifth page, you see the, skip past the item of our allocations, those are stated allocations, and we have not received a final allocation as of yet or an adjustment to our allocation. If you look at the last column on FY '24, I presented this to you earlier in the year, and have updated our collections for our estimated needs. So, you can see our current year add-on room, we've collected 100% of that, and still with months to collect. Couple of months left, we over-collected in our county four mill. Gross production, we are 50% of what our estimated needs were. But if you remember when we budgeted, or when I created the budget, I budgeted 50%, so we will still be in good shape there from a budget perspective. Motor vehicle tax, we are at 87%, R.A. tax, 81, school land earnings, 98. So, as of this month, we've collected 95% of our estimated needs, which is really good, moving in with two months still to collect. Okay, Agenda Item 6.4, extra duty salary schedule. We have one adjustment to make to this extra duty salary schedule, and if you look on page three, the last page, you'll see that highlighted. Working with Mrs. Potter to ensure that we have our extended school year services covered for our visually impaired students. We are raising that extra duty stipend hourly wage from 25 to 75. Our staff member that works with those students is certified in visual impairment and does a great job with our students, and really meets an immediate need that we have.
Is there just one of those that does visual impairment?
Correct. We have, we just have one person that's certified with visual impairment.
Thank you.
Correct. She does a great job. Agenda Item 6.5, our revenue and expenditure for our activity accounts. You can open those. We have the top one, which is the summary for the year, and the bottom one, which is our summary for the month of April. We have not seen much movement in those accounts. Activities are continuing to close those out, where you will see the greatest increase in revenue is in number 813, and that is a result of the Queen Trust depositing money from the foundation approved through that budget into account number 813, the activity account. Agenda Item 6.6, our fundraisers. We do bring back to your fundraiser form, if you will look at that attachment, so, I want to congratulate our TSA students that qualified for Nationals, and with that qualification is going to result in some fundraisers that they need to do. That national competition will be in Orlando, Florida, and so this will help them begin to raise some money with flight hotel and expenses to be a part of that trip. We do not have any interaccount transfers. Agenda Item 6.7, Agenda Item 6.8, our child nutrition report. Just to show you our meals to date, continue to be strong, we continue to serve a lot of students for our lunch and breakfast, and we'll be sending out a survey, I mentioned that last month, we're gonna be sending out a survey towards the end of school for families to fill out. Keystone is interested in folks' opinion and want to do a good job serving our students, so I encourage folks to be watching for that survey. Any questions regarding the consent agenda? How much is TSA needing to get to to fund the trip? There are about 2,600, it looks like, in there. I don't, I don't really know, Ms. Martini.
I know that, I mean, they were booking flights, I think I saw something today, it was like 400, 450, and then with hotel rooms and all of that, it's, it's a substantial amount.
And Orlando's an expensive place.
Yeah, yeah. And they're there for multiple nights, so I, she's kinda thrown out some numbers, but I don't know exactly.
So, there'll probably be some more fundraisers other than that one?
Well, some of them have already been approved. This was just an extra one, so.
Help me, Mr. Arno, something here I don't know that I understand, or need to understand it, is that the money that comes in on the advertising for the live stream, does it come into this, this activity they're doing here?
Yes, it's in activity accounts, in athletics.
Is it in just straight athletics?
Correct.
Okay. So, it looks like it received it about, what, $96,000? Was that for the year?
Yes.
Okay. And then, are certain things distributed out of there, or do they take percentages? Like, for example, let's just talk about track.
Sure.
Does some, do we move? Do we have an interaccount transfer?
No.
We just pay it out of that?
Correct. Athletics pays for hotels, they paid for hotels, for track, they paid for basketball, they paid for, I think, baseball team went to cash in tournament. So, one, each athletic group had a tournament stay that was paid for out of that account.
And is, at the beginning of the year, after that money is clawed and after it's fundraised, like, which would be this summer sometime? Then, is it, is there a budget, or does somehow do we see what they think they're gonna spend all of that on? Or is it just as needed?
As needed.
Okay. So, it's not like equally distributed?
No.
Okay.
No, because you might not have the same amount of players on a track team as you would baseball.
Yeah, I didn't mean equally, like, football gets the same amount as track, but is there some way, is there any way that in the beginning it would say, football's gonna get 25,000, basketball's gonna get 10?
No, no, you can do that, but no, it wasn't done that way.
Wasn't done that way.
No.
I thought, I thought one time it might have been done, it was gonna be done that way.
Well, no, concession and gate are distributed like that.
And it's like percentage, isn't it?
Correct.
Like, depending on the size of the sport.
That's right. Well, no, it's depending on the gate you work.
Oh, okay.
Because, so, the variable of that is, say, you work homecoming, it's gonna take a larger group to work homecoming. So, not every group can do that, but then that group is going to get that percentage from that homecoming.
Okay, 'cause I've never really thought, I think it was, everybody was working hard to do it right, and I just never did understand it, really.
But to answer your question, no. To your original question, no, there wasn't a specific allocation made for every athletic.
Do you see any advantage to doing that?
No.
Okay. 'Cause, you know, when we go to Civil War Convention, and when we go to all those things, and we go to those meetings, the one thing they caution us on all the time are these accounts that are so large like that, as to somehow, I know the auditors don't have them closed, and we don't have to bug the auditor, really. It's mainly just to be able to understand it, not really oversee it, but to understand it. So, when some advertiser asks you a question, it's hard for everybody to understand, and if we don't understand it, then we can't.
I mean, that's certainly something, if you guys wanted to change, you could.
I just figured it would be something, it'd be interesting to see the accounting of it, not for any reason, but just be interesting, you know? Because it's been such a great addition to what we're doing, from what I can see, that's one year or two years old.
Two.
Two, I believe.
I believe.
I think it's just two. I think it's just two.
Well, I think what we've, or what I've heard is just that we've reduced the amount of businesses that are continually having different athletic groups. So, that's been a real advantage to it.
And it replaced the, just being fundraised all the time.
Yeah.
I see it's great advantages. Oh, that was just some questions I hadn't had a chance to ask you.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? All right, I'll move to your left here. What is the consent agenda? I make a motion that we accept 6.1 through 6.9 as presented.
Second.
Barton.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Okay, item number seven, vote to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for fiscal year '24. 7.1, general fund as referenced, 7.2, building fund as referenced, 7.3, child nutrition fund as referenced, and 7.4, the gift fund as referenced.
Okay, Agenda Item 7.1, our general fund purchase order expenses for the month. If you'll go down through there, I'll read off a couple of purchase orders, entertain any questions you might have. Purchase order number 499, $2,724.11. Those are some personal finance textbooks for high school. Purchase order number 504, $2,000, that is some repairs to plumbing at the ag farm with Rose Plumbing. Purchase order number 506, through Amazon, $1,152, fax supplies for Alba High School. That's required expenditure that they have to make through our tech, the technology money that we receive from the state credit, and then we're reimbursed on that money. Purchase order number 508 is the same, it's through Goodheart and Goodcocks, $4,518. It's fax curriculum for the middle school. Purchase order number 509, Flicks Farm Supply, ag farm waters for $7,172.76. And those are just a few. Any questions on the other general fund purchase orders? What was done at the ag farm? What was the plumbing and the waters, were those, where were the waters placed? I think that part of the open, the open PO with Rose was repairs when they were putting in the new building. They hit a line and had to cap it, had to do something as they were walking on it, and I don't know specifics, I can't, I knew specifics, can't really remember. The ag farm waters, from what I've been told. There you go. Tell me what those are again.
Is that for the?
Like, it's for the animals.
I believe it's for the new building, like, self-water.
Yeah, self-water. There we go.
Yeah.
Have they started a new building yet?
They've been clearing the, clearing it off.
Just for pads.
Correct. So, yes, they have.
But the building itself?
No.
And that pad, is it the right size? It looks so little to me. Of course, I drive by it about four times a day.
I think it's the right size.
I don't know.
They always look smaller than you think.
I know. I didn't know whether you'd been out there, see, or I just think they're small.
Yeah, I mean, I've looked at it. Looks good to me. I'll ask, I'll ask the agonizer.
No, 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 I just, I wish, thank you. Is that?
Okay, Agenda Item 7.1, our payroll. We have substitute pay, and we have one substitute payment on the general fund. 7.2, our building fund, for April. I will go through a couple of those. We have purchase order number 65, $26,500 for a new middle school cafeteria unit. Purchase order number 66 with the OG and E is an open purchase order. We started the year with $175,000 through OG and E, and are going to need to add this additional $45,000 to make it through the remainder of the year. Purchase order number 67, Top Choice Mechanical for $3,000. That was some repair and work on the chiller up here at the high school, then they start that up and move that over. Purchase order number 70, Great Auto Mechanical for $5,000, it's an open purchase order. We have an open purchase order for Rose Plumbing for $5,000. Purchase orders number 72, 73, and 74 are all custodial supplies and maintenance equipment for the summer. We have Treat Solutions, $2,174.03. Those are gonna be repairs to scrubbing machines and equipment. And then Geekins and Price, $9,337.72. Those are supplies from Geekins and Price, cleaning supplies. And then purchase order number 74, $2,548.64. Again, those are also cleaning supplies from Treat. Any questions about those?
No question on summer mowing? What's our plan for summer mowing? And would that, is that part of, it's not on here, but is that part of our building fund?
No, so, we can pay that. We pay that a general fund, and we have somebody that works part-time and mows, and actually started mowing, I believe, Monday, go to our high school Monday, and mowed our us farm last week.
So, they'll be covering all sides?
Yes.
Are they doing landscaping too, or just?
Just strictly mowing and weeding.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, 7.3, our child nutrition fund. We have one purchase order out of our child nutrition fund, that's with Vendetti Plumbing, purchase order number 16. That is to repair the dishwasher at the middle school, $6,523.39. Okay, our gift fund, Agenda Item 7.4. All of these expenditures that come out of our gift fund are a result of donation from the Alba State Bank towards our program, and so really want to thank them again for that donation. It's really helped all of our fine arts programs, and really appreciate that. So, I'll go through some of those purchase orders. Number 20 with Amazon, $4,765. Those are some equipment supplies for art. So, we bought some folding tables, leather stamp equipment, portable speakers, welding equipment, punch kits, and two rolling work benches for those. And then purchase order number 21 with Amazon, $1,392. Those again were art equipment, a laser engraver, and a sander. And then purchase orders number 22 through 26 are all expenditures for Mrs. Sutter's vocal program. So, we have from Street Water Sound for $6,263.52. She bought microphones, music stand headphones, a digital piano. They also bought some new vocal music uniforms for contests for her students. Purchase order number 25, she bought a music cabinet for $1,242. Purchase order number 26, an iPad Air to help her with her practices and concerts for $1,130. So, again, thank you to Alba State Bank for their generous donation for our arts programs. Any questions? If there are none, I'll reference the proof.
Okay, I make a motion.
Make a motion to approve item 7.7, 7.4 as presented. Second.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Okay, resignations, retirements, and reassignments. We do not have any retirements at this time, but we have multiple resignations, so we'll go through those. We have Morgan Gregel is going to be resigning her position as early childhood teacher at Washington Elementary. We have Michelle Mackey, she will be resigning her position as a third grade teacher at Longfellow Elementary. We have Alexis Gaspard, who is going to be resigning her position as Alamo School Secretary, and Alexis also worked with our child nutrition, did a great job. Then we have Morgan Duncan, she is a support employee, paraprofessional that will also not be returning next year. And then finally, we have Austin McGee. Austin McGee was our pledge piano for our vocal music programs, and Austin's still gonna do some help with those programs. We originally hired him as a five-hour employee, and so he's gonna come back and do some hourly work, but just won't be working each day for that five-hour contract, and so it requires his signature that he will be coming back in that position. From my communication, I know that principals are working hard and have brought some people in, I have been doing some interviews to replace filled positions, and filled positions also want to just remind everyone tomorrow at 3:30 at the middle school, we'll be in three, Mr. Brashers, so we encourage everyone to be in attendance for that. That is all I have.
Thank you. Before we move on, can I share something?
Yes.
I do know that this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I would like to publicly thank all the teachers and administrators for what they do. I think our children are blessed beyond measure. I appreciate everything everybody does, so thank you. That's it. Good job, and I'd like the foundation, you know, put on a nice spread.
Yes.
It was nice. I think they dug the four problem areas, and now she's, yeah, took the rest up all the months. Okay.
Number nine, we're on.
We're on number nine. What do we have here? Am I looking at number nine?
We're gonna go, yeah.
We're gonna go to 10. I don't think, it sounds like we may have something.
No, no.
Okay.
I can't tell if you're looking at me or not. Looking at me or not, looking at me.
Well, that's maybe. Oh, Jane. Well, looks sometimes tall, don't they?
Right, yeah. Get with it. We should be in number two now.
It's been a long day. Okay, I have to have these to read, but I don't have to have these to see. I guess I won't make that mistake again. Do you have any glasses I can wear? Or you don't own them yet?
No, I am.
I need to borrow yours.
You're in the pickup.
You're in the pickup.
I forgot.
I'm just hitting that plus button.
Okay. Item number 10, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve an offer of employment on a one-year temporary contract to applicant number one, applicant number two, and applicant number three, certified teachers for the '24, that should be '24 or '25 school year, type over there. Okay.
Okay, we'll start first with Mrs. Webster, and then we'll have Mrs. Tucker, and then Mrs. Parker.
All right. I am very, very excited to introduce Ashley briefly. She is from Durant, and followed her husband up here to Alba with, with his promotion at Walmart, and Ashley has some good experience. She was with Washington in the library for four years, and then she stopped there to finish her master's degree in elementary education, and she student-taught at Lincoln, and we loved her, and so we are so excited to recommend her for hire for a fifth-grade teaching position at Lincoln. She's got three kids in the district, so.
I, I'm equally excited, I'm gonna tell for your excitement, to introduce Cassandra Coons. She is from Fordham. She graduated from Northwestern with an early childhood degree in December. She did her student teaching under Mrs. McMurphy in third grade, and she's currently filling in for Mrs. Sadorasney's second grade class on maternity leave. So, we have got to give her a good old test drive, and as well as she has us, and we haven't scared her away. haven't scared her away. She's married. Her husband is Aaron. He's lieutenant at Bill Johnson Correctional Center. She has a son she's very proud of. We hear a lot about Cade. I've yet to meet him, but I've seen lots of pictures. And Cade is a kindergarten student at Washington, and we are just super excited to hopefully get her on board with your approval. We have a second and third grade position open. We're kind of waiting to see how that plays out, because she'll fit perfect in either one.
And to match that excitement, special ed is very difficult to find right now.
Yes.
Ms. Wismann came to us last year after retirement and joined our team as a para and has done amazing work as a para. She's great with all the students. And then when this position opened for special ed, she came to me willing to take it, very excited about it. She has a lot of experience in middle school severe profound, and that's very difficult to find. So we are very excited to have her as well and recommend her for hire.
Okay. I have your motion.
Motion to approve applicants number one, number two, and number three for hire.
A second.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Pinkton?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Welcome aboard.
You guys can, you don't have to say.
You are welcome to stay. It's pretty fun, but you can also leave. Did you guys already tell them that?
Thank you.
I remember, discussion with possible board action, vote to employ the certified teachers listed on exhibit A for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So if you open up that attachment, all of those employees have been through the Oklahoma Teacher Leadership Evaluation Model, and have been recommended for rehire from our principals. Very proud of some of our teachers that you will notice on that list have completed certification and moved from emergency to certified. And so we've got some that are not willing to be on that list because they're still working towards that, but we know they'll get there. But very proud of our, our staff and proud of our principals, so recommend approval of this list for certified teachers for twenty-four, twenty-five.
I make the motion that we employ the certified teachers listed in exhibit A for twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Item number twelve, discussion with possible board action, vote to employ the certified teachers listed on exhibit B on a temporary contract for twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
And so these teachers, we want to offer employment, our first year teachers, we will put them on a temporary contract for four semesters. And so that's what our procedure and protocol is to do. And so recommend rehiring these certified teachers on a temporary contract for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Move to approve the teachers listed in attachment B for hire for the temporary contract for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
A second.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Item number thirteen, discussion with possible board action, vote to employ the non-certified personnel listed on exhibit C for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So these are all of our support staff for the district. And all of these have also gone through evaluation with their supervisor. And again, some of these folks we could not have school without. They support us not only from cafeteria to paraprofessionals in the classroom to our administrative assistants. And we recommend rehire of the personnel listed on exhibit C.
Motion? Support.
Make a motion to approve the attachment C of our support staff for twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Barton?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes. Item number fourteen, discussion with possible board action, vote to accept a ten thousand dollar donation to the Alva High School Tournament account from Charles Morton Share Trust Foundation.
So policy requires that we receive donation like this, it requires board approval. Share Trust has been very generous with our tournament the last few years in being able to host a really good event that saves three days of travel for our student athletes and allows us to bring folks into the community. And so I would recommend approval of this donation. It will help offset the cost of officials and other tournament expenses. I know that they already, I think they're really close to securing a full bracket for both boys and girls for next year. And so it'll be, it'll be a really good tournament, exciting time for the community to get next year.
Motion?
I move to accept the donation listed in item fourteen.
Second. Pinkleton?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Item number fifteen, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve Northwest Technology Center to use one school bus to transport students for twenty Northwest Tech, Northwest Tech Center to the Northwest Oklahoma State University campuses during Smash Camp May the twenty eighth through the twenty-second.
So if you open that attachment there, you can see the letter from Dr. E. K. Northwest Technology Center. We have been partnering them through the SMASH, with the Smash Camp for, gosh, at least the last five or six years. It's been a great thing for many of our students to be part of. And so I would recommend approval of them to use a school bus for this camp.
Make a motion to approve. Yeah, item fifteen.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Okay, we have some discussion with possible board action, item number sixteen, to approve the following, Out of State Travel Request. And we'll do both of these at the same time. High School, La Club, traveling to San Antonio, Texas. And Alva Middle School, TSA, traveling to a national TSA conference in Orlando, Florida.
So both of these are, for the most part, lucky savory team. Our La Club has been able to travel the last few years since COVID and did prior. So that is a good reward and opportunity for those, that group of students. And then also for TSA, Ms. Wills does an outstanding job with our TSA students. And we've had, we've had students qualify before for national competitions, and so I would recommend approval of these two Out of State travel requests.
I make a motion to approve the following, both of those Out of State travel requests to San Antonio, Texas, as well as Orlando, Florida.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Item number seventeen, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following, summer school classes and instructors. We'll do all three of them with one motion. As you can see, these are routine items for us. Unless someone tells me something different, I think there's something to do every year. Seventeen-one is the Summer Reading Academy with those instructors. Seventeen-point-two is the Extended School Year, Special Ed Services with those three instructors. And seventeen-point-three, Extended School Year, Speech Path Services and that one instructor. And the dates mention.
So as Ms. McDermott mentioned, these are all required activities for the summer. The Summer Reading Academy is not a required activity, but we feel like it serves our students as, as a need for our students. Our Extended School Year Services are a requirement to meet the needs of individual education plans that are written for students. And so I would recommend approval of those teachers this time. Item number seven point one, seven point two, and seven point three.
I move that we approve item seventeen-one, seventeen-two, and seventeen-three. Second.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Item number eighteen, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the
following, Out of School District Camp for the summer of twenty twenty-four. And it is the Alva Summer Strength and Condition.
So if you open that, that attachment, this will be the flyer that will be sent home with our middle school, high school students. And this gives the times and requirements for those students for this summer.
When do we, do we have to approve the people that'll be working here? Should they set automatically time under their extra duties?
So we'll bring back extra duty assignment schedule in June.
Before this goes out, Dr. Argyle, we're calling this the Alva Summer Strength, and the paragraph, although the students' names are listed, it's still listed as Alva Pride in that summer pride.
In the, in the, in the light of.
I just, I mean, that may be something, bring confusion. I don't, I don't want to rename something that isn't.
Can you help me remember that?
Yeah.
This one, thank you.
I don't think, because it finishes up with the Summer Strength and Condition, but that would be fine.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. This really doesn't, is, doesn't reflect anything different than it's been done in the past as far as dates?
No, dates are, I mean, dates are going to be the same. You still have your dead week that last, or that first week of July. The open lifts is, appears to be a little bit different, so.
Is it not mandatory? Some of it's mandatory, some of it's not.
Some of it will be mandatory, I think, each coach on May sixteenth, that the students are going to be meeting with fall and spring coaches, which possibly they got announcements this week, or last night. And so they're going to go over detail about what's mandatory and what is not. The open lift, those weeks five, six, and seven, I don't believe those are going to be mandatory. They want to try to give the kids a little bit of a summer. And so June is going to be a really, really busy time for our high school athletes and middle school with baseball, lifting, basketball camps, basketball summer leagues, FFA, judging camp, you know, everything that we have. And so I think there's some discussion about trying to have some more open time for our kids in July.
Motion to approve the Alva Summer Strength and Condition.
Is there a max on per family? Cost per family?
So on the young students, yes.
Because I don't see it any.
There, I don't, I don't think that there is anything on here that talks about that max cost. So no, to answer your question, but our little kids, they do that if you sign up for so many camps, it's, it's that certain amount of cost. But any student that, with that, if that price became prohibitive for any student, we're going to figure out a way to make sure they can do it. Yes, yeah.
Move to approve item eighteen-point-one as presented.
Second.
Barton?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Item number nineteen, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve a resolution for schools and libraries, universal services, or e-rate for twenty-four, twenty-five. This resolution authorizes filing of the Form 471, applications for funding year twenty-four, twenty-five, and the payment of the applicant, applicant's share upon approval of funding and receipt of services. And payment of the applicant's, of the applicant's share upon approval of funding and receipt of services.
So this is a routine agenda item, and e-rate's been a really good thing for schools, and this is what we file, and it allows us to make technology improvements to the infrastructure and pay a portion of that. And then where the other portion is paid by state and federal government. And so in the past, we used that to upgrade access points. We've used to upgrade firewalls and so forth. And so the approval of this allows us to file that application and begin that process.
Something we always want to protect, it's one of the state regions, and it's sometimes legislature wants to come rest with it, and it's very much, we need to really, very affordable for our schools. So do I have a motion? I vote with your approved resolution to schools and libraries, the e-rate twenty-four, twenty-five.
A second.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Okay, ladies are on the last page. And gentlemen? I'm not a guest, it's normal. Discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following renewal contracts and membership services. If there isn't any opposition, we'll approve these with one motion. Can we? As we are, I think, is there any of these that we have not approved before?
No, so just a couple of things I want to point out to you.
Please do.
The twenty-point-eight, salage is dead. That's a name change, it's wind gauge.
Okay.
You probably hear, everybody still, many times refers to as that, that salage is wind gauge. Twenty-point-nine, Clearwater Enterprises, that's been a really good thing for the district. We saved twenty-six thousand dollars by being part of that consortium, purchasing natural gas, so that's been a real positive to the district. Twenty-point-ten, the golf and country club for FY twenty-four, that contract. So that's paying for this year. And the reason why that is coming to you as a board later is we spent some time working out details for that budget. I think moving forward, you want to try to do that at the beginning of the year, and hopefully, hopefully, we can get approval of the Queen Trust budget and move that forward quickly. But there were some other partnerships that we worked on together throughout the school year which made this contract come towards the end. And so it's something that was reviewed by that committee and agreed upon, and actually what we did last year, minus the hidden mats that we purchased last year. So this is just for use of course in range models.
And it was matched by Northwestern, wasn't it? Isn't it the same?
I can't answer that question for sure. I, I know that Northwestern does pay a fee. I, I'm not sure what that is.
Sure if it's the same.
Yeah. But they, but they also do help.
Can I say any other questions about it's five thousand? I think the other one's five thousand. I make a motion that we approve the renewal contracts and memberships of twenty-point-one to twenty-point-ten as presented.
Second.
Barton?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Are there no items in the business?
No, wait.
I'd like to give a shout-out, though. The teachers and the administrators have been very diligent to share administrative planning at different sessions as we go through, and was very pleased and thanked the offer for Washington, no, pardon, not Washington, they've got the littlest types, but Longfellow and Lincoln invited Northwest Tech and the university at once going out there to come and present Career Day. And it was a great opportunity for my students, because I made them do all the talking. So they got to talk about what they do and why they chose that route and what they see as a possible career. So when we talk about how we're implementing all of the ICAC. So when we talk about how we're implementing all of the ICAP things, and it's a real hot topic in education, thank you for the opportunity. I think it's important that we take advantage of opportunities our taxpayers provide, and it's a great opportunity. And I will say to both principals sitting here, I think they're both sitting here, they were lovely attendants. Very attentive, asked very good questions. I think my Northwest Tech students were more intimidated by them than they were of them. So, but thank you for the opportunity. And I warned them this probably would be an ongoing thing, and they all said, well, we're graduating, so good luck to that. I have to recruit a new crew, but they, they love doing it, and we appreciate the opportunity. So thank you very much. Partnerships. It is. All right. Signing of documents approved by earlier, earlier action. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second?
A second.
And?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Barton?